I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation with Mark Willis, if you'd come forward. And by the way, make sure the green light is on on the microphone, introduce yourself, and then you may proceed.
Good evening. My name is Mark Willis. I'm the pastor for North Oak Christian Church, and I'm honored and humbled to be asked to open your meeting with an invocation tonight. Would you please join me in an attitude of prayer? Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore we seek your direction in this decision-making process. In the Bible, we read, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways, submit to God, and God will make your path straight." Help us to listen attentively to one another with open hearts and minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good for our community. We trust that you will guide us on this path and lead us to reach good decisions that reflect your will. May our words and actions be guided by your love and grace. In your holy name, we do pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Is the approval of this evening's agenda. Commissioner Johnson.
Moved to approve.
Hold on. There you go.
Moved to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any comments or questions? Commissioner Withington, would you like to be recognized?
Yes.
You are recog-- oh, sorry. Fat fingers as always. You are recognized. Please proceed.
I'd like to move 2024-285 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, just, you know, so we can have a discussion and find out what the $20,000 transfers were.
That is certainly something that is your privilege to make that, make that motion. Would you--
I don't, I don't care where we put it at on--
Okay, I can ask if you had an order in mind--
Yeah, I, I could care less. We do it at the end, wherever you guys want to put it.
Okay. I will probably just add it to the end. That seems the most logical, unless someone else has another preference they would like to express. Discussion. I think that, yeah, I certainly agree with Commissioner Withington. I think that actually bringing this, because it is an expenditure onto regular agenda, if there's any, any question whatsoever, since it involves monies in the, in our care, I think that is certainly an appropriate thing to do. I see no other comments to be made. With that, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll on his amend-- I mean, we don't have to really do that, do we?
I think it just moves.
Just moves the agenda?
There's no motion. It's phrased as a motion, but there's no vote. It just moves. It is, it is on the regular because one commissioner has to move it to regular.
That's true. I forgot about that. You're totally correct. Very well. That brings us back to our original question of approval of the agenda with the change, moving 2024 to 85 to the third position on our regular agenda. Further discussion? Seeing none. Commissioner Johnson, you had the underlying motion. If you would like to close, you may do so.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
That brings us to public comments. We do have one person scheduled for individual comments. Administrator, if you'd like to tell us about that a little bit?
Commissioner, if I could suggest doing ceremonial matters, which is the next item on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ceremonial matters. I skipped right over that. Under ceremonial matters, we have 2024-278. That would be Commissioner Withington's issue. Commissioner, if you would like to address that issue, I'll go ahead and get your microphone on. There you are. Proceed.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read this. It just says, October 3, 2024, whereas promoting physical activity and healthy lifestyle among our youth is essential for the well-being and future development, and whereas Walk to School Day encourages regular physical activity, reduces traffic congestion, and helps improve air quality around schools, and whereas Walk to School Day is a global event held annually the first week of October with the goal of promoting safe and active transportation choices for children and families, and whereas Walk to School Day is an opportunity for parents, teachers, and community leaders to raise awareness about the benefits of walking to school and the importance of pedestrian safety, and whereas our community recognizes the need to create safe routes for walking and biking, and is committed to the continued improvements of sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian infrastructure, and whereas Walk to School Day provides an opportunity for schools, parents, local governments to work together to make walking to school a safe and appealing option for all students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 9, 2024, as Walk and Bike to School Day in Clay County. Today was actually Walk to School Day for Chotow Elementary. They're here, and then my, my kids' school, Ravenwood, will be celebrating Walk to School Day next week, and we have the principal here for that. But, you know, Walk to School Day is very important to me, something I'm passionate about. I've been fighting to make sure that the neighborhoods in the First Annex neighborhoods in Kansas City and Clay County have safer routes to school for kids. Some of our kids at, like, Winwood Elementary or Maple Park Elementary, their, their bus is close as one block to school because the neighborhood's been deemed unsafe for walking. So, you know, we've, we started organizing these events, and it helps promote community togetherness, and just, it's just a fun time. And, you know, today I joined Chotow Elementary, and, you know, the North Kansas City High School football team was there, and some of their cheerleaders, and next week we'll have the Winnetonka football team, and some of our other local elected officials, like Congressman Emmanuel Cleaver, will be walking to school with us and everything. So, it's just, it's just a fun time to promote safe routes to school and healthy lifestyles. So, I'd like to give Dr. Laura Foster from Ravenwood the opportunity to speak, and Principal Anjanette Smith from Ravenwood to say a few words if they would like.
Who would like to speak first? Please come forward, state your name, make sure the green light is on, and then proceed with your comments. Now, you don't have to speak if you don't want to. I'm not trying to--
Yeah, no. It's good. I'm Anjanette Smith, the principal at Chotow. I've been there for eight years now, and just like you were saying, we have actually increased our walkers just because in those eight years we've, we have sidewalks there that we didn't have when I started. And so, we have increased our walkers and access to the neighborhoods to our school, and so it's been such a great thing for our kiddos, but also just that community built. So, like, when we have sidewalks and students are walking, then it brings families together because then students and families and parents are starting to get to know each other, and that's just also a great part of having access to our schools and being out there and getting active. So, thank you.
And it's an event open to the public?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the, just so everybody knows, what is, what is the time and all that that--
We do it once a year, and I usually do it right before a break on that first week of October. So, tomorrow we don't have school, so we did it today to help get kids, so, kids to school. We normally do it from 8:00 to 8:20. Our doors open at 8:30, so we need to get down there for the bus riders and our parent drop-offs if they didn't participate. So, 8:00 to 8:20, we meet at our business partner, the rehab center, the Northland Rehab Center right there, and it's a really short walk. And so, we had Casey Wolf this year, and so he even got on the school buses as some of the kids didn't participate, but we were able to, like, get them excited as well, and he greeted them when they walked in the building, so.
So hopefully next year we'll be able to, to make this announcement prior to so that you can maybe have--
Absolutely.
--a few more people show up.
Yeah.
Commissioner Withington, did you have anything that you would like to add?
Dr. Foster, do you want to say anything?
Sure. Hi, I'm Laura Foster. I'm the principal at Ravenwood Elementary, and this is my second year as principal there. And there's a lot to echo from what's already been said, but for us, it's a great way to bring our entire feeder pattern together, as well as the Sheriff's Department, community members, our PTA is really involved, so we have a lot of special guests coming to join us. I can't share that with you. It's a secret right now. I think you have a pretty good idea who it might be based on this morning's. Our walk is next Wednesday morning, and so we meet at Greater Life Church. We start to gather around 8:30, and then we start walking towards school at 8:45. We have our middle school in our feeder pattern joining this year, and they're going to be out front with their cheerleaders and everyone, kind of welcoming our kids. For some of our kiddos that can't walk to school, like Adventure Club is already there. They kind of go out and do laps outside. This is just a great way for us to not only bring the community together, but really promoting healthy lifestyles. We started a run-walk club this year. Our PE coaches have done that, and so we're doing that in the mornings as well, just really promoting getting outside, fresh air, getting kids and families together.
No, that's good. And I think you might have said, but could you say again how many years you've been doing this?
This is my second year, but I believe this is the ninth or 10th year for Ravenwood, isn't it?
Yeah, it's our ninth year. It would be our 10th, but stupid COVID, so--
Okay, so yes, 10th in spirit, 9th year in practice.
Before, we're going to take a short break here to present the honorary resolution. Before we do so, are there any other commissioners who would wish to comment?
Well, thank you for your support.
Thank you. We will stand at ease for a few moments and present the resolution.
[inaudible]
Okay, everyone, be here, please. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Oh, good, I knew that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I saw a board at Chotow. I saw a board at Chotow. She was like the one--
Okay, now we move on to public comments, and I believe there is one scheduled here. Administrator, do you, would you like to give some information on that?
Absolutely. I'd like to introduce Shelley King, who is with a new food pantry that's here in the Clay County area. The name is In As Much Food Pantry, and she's requested to have just a few minutes with the commission to introduce herself and also their program and facilities. Is that--
Please make sure the microphone is on. I noticed it got turned off.
Okay. Hi, my name is Shelley King, and I'm the executive director at In As Much Ministry, and I thank you for your time. But, quick question. How many of you have heard of In As Much Ministry Food Pantry? Not reading it on the agenda, but just before you. Okay, very good. That's one of, and you have. Okay, so two of you. And I have been with the pantry almost a year now, and it is, we started in 1986 with Dawn and Dorothy McLean, and Dorothy saw a mother diapering her child with a Walmart bag. And so they started this ministry by providing diapers and bread from their front porch. And a couple years later, they moved to Second Baptist Church, where they started to bring food into the pantry, and it was named in 1988. So, we have been around for many, many years. And since I have been at the food pantry, it amazes me, the people in Clay County that aren't familiar with us. And so, I wanted to just come before you, just to help us bring, just to bring information to the community. As you're out in the community talking to people that you know are experiencing food insecurity, if you would make sure that they know about us. We have grown to providing food to over 500 families a month, and almost 10,000 pounds of food a week is what we're giving out. We're open twice a week, and we're thinking about opening a third session just to meet the increase in need. I'm sure you all have experienced the growing prices in the grocery store, and it has really hit some of our families in Clay County. So, again, bringing awareness as you're talking to people with regards to volunteering, if they're looking for volunteer opportunities or your members in the community are experiencing food insecurity, if you would remember us. We did just pick up Schumacher School for the Kids Back Snack Program. So, we do serve several of the elementary schools and one middle school in the area for weekend back snacks. So, anyway, are there any questions? I do thank you for your time.
Yes. Could you give us the contact information for anyone who's listening who might want to either avail themselves of your services or would like to help volunteer and do, and continue the work that you're doing? Could you give us a little information on that and, and when your food pantry is open?
Yes, definitely. And I have brought some handouts for you all, and anybody that wants to take one, I can leave those. But we're located in the Freedom House Building, which is an amazing building that houses four nonprofit agencies. We're at 2050 Plumbersway. We're open on Tues, Thursday and Saturday mornings from 9:30 to 11:45 a.m. Okay?
Thank you very much. And anyone who wants to volunteer can certainly reach out to you there.
Yes, please reach out to us. My phone number is on there, and they can also contact us via our website. So, thanks for your time.
We, we have another commissioner who would like to either ask a question or has a comment. So Commissioner Withington, you are recognized?
Yeah, I was just going to say, that back snack program's really nice. I helped start the one for Maplewood Elementary with Feed Northland Kids several years ago, so that's a, that's a good program. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson, you wish to be recognized?
You know, the only thing I'd have to say, it, it shocks me that there's that much need in Clay County. You know, we always think of ourselves as a little bit affluent, and everybody, you know, we used, when we first moved up here, the kids that were farmers, the farmer's sons, they drove better cars than my kid could have ever afforded.
Yeah.
So, you know, you just saw the wealth around that area and, and everywhere in Gladstone and all that we, we've ever lived. And, and it, it's sad that it's come to that, and I, I hope that you're going to get lots of help, and God bless you for doing this.
Thank you.
That's, that's an amazing thing.
Thank you so much. And it is interesting that the statistics show that we serve about one-third of our population comes from Liberty, and the other two-thirds are outside of Liberty in the greater Clay County area. And we've grown 20% this year with people that are in need by either new clients or are returning clients that are coming more frequently. They can come twice a month. So, the need is growing.
I don't see any other questions, but I do want to, you know, this is not just for kids and families, but also seniors. I unfortunately find myself in that category haply. I do not find it necessary to, to reach out to you to receive services, but something that we've seen is, and we still have a house payment, our grocery bill has exceeded our house payment.
Yes.
And for seniors, that's a reality. So, just want to make sure that, that there's no misconception that you only serve children and, and growing families, but also everybody in need.
Yes, we actually have three senior facilities that food is delivered to as well, and we have shut-ins that can't get out that are seniors that, we have a couple volunteers that take food to them on a weekly basis. So, but yes, seniors are very real in our program.
I'm glad I mentioned that, and that you were able to give us a little more information.
Thank you very much.
There seem to be no other questions, so thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who would wish to make comments to the commission? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There'll be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are five items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is commission meeting minutes from September 19 and September 26. Resolution 2024-280 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from September 21 through September 27. There are 361 invoices totaling $2,936,989.42. Resolution 2024-279 is approving capital project encumbrance request and purchase of two vehicles with two trade-ins for the Parks Department. Resolution 2024-282 is approving the appointment of finance, or, excuse me, of fines, interest, and escrow of Clay County by the Treasurer's Office. And Resolution 2024-283 is approving an addendum to the trap shooters lease agreement between Clay County, Missouri, and the Kansas City Trap Shooters Association.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That completes our consent agenda. That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda would be 2024-281. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-281 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from September 21 to September 27. There are seven invoices totaling $6,211.91.
Commissioner Johnson?
Moved to approve 2024-281.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-281. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-286. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-286 is approving a funding agreement for a project utilizing Chapter 100 tax abatement.
Very well. Is there, excuse me, go ahead.
Would you like for a little information about it?
Yes, I wasn't sure. I was kind of missing your signals.
I'll do a sort of a brief recap for the information that is in your packet, and also want to acknowledge that Sid Douglas is here with Gilmore and Bell, who's also the county's bond counsel. As the commission may recall, last week during a presentation, Mr. Douglas presented information about what a Chapter 100 tax abatement program is. What you have before you this evening is consideration of a funding agreement. As we discussed, whenever the county will receive an application for consideration of a Chapter 100 tax abatement, the county then has an obligation to do our due diligence and, and review that application, which may require us to engage consultants on the county's behalf, such as Gilmore and Bell or financial advisors. This funding agreement is between the county and Gateway Trails Solar, which is proposing a solar project in the unincorporated portion of Clay County. We know we're going to be getting an application for a chapter tax abatement. And so, this is a funding agreement that would require the, the applicant, Gateway Trails, to provide to the county an amount of $20,000 that we have at our disposal to use to cover the costs for those consultants that the county would hire on our behalf to do our due diligence on the proposal. If during that process, our costs would exceed that, the funding agreement allows us to go back to the developer to ask for additional funds. If at the end of the completion of the due diligence, there's money left over, per the agreement, that money goes back to the developer. So, this is intended to cover the county's costs so that we're not out of pocket for evaluating this application. By approving this funding agreement, you are not agreeing to the project. You are not agreeing to, to even actually doing tax abatement on the project, and that is specified in the funding agreement. All this does is says they're going to cover the cost of the county for us to do the evaluation, and it will come to the commission for you to evaluate the tax abatement and, and to evaluate the process, the project, when it comes through the planning and zoning process. I'm happy to answer any questions about the funding agreement, and I know Mr. Douglas would be happy to answer any questions.
By the way, thank you for making clear that what we are doing is we are putting to get, to together the evaluation process, and as you said, this does not indicate approval or disapproval of any specific project. It is just the first step in going through that process. And I wanted to, I know you just said that, but I wanted to repeat it so that those watching would, would understand that that is what we are taking up. With that, Commissioner, oh, did you decide? Okay. Commissioner Withington, you seem to be next on the queue.
I just had a question. It says Hush Blackwell in there. We're not using Hush Blackwell, are we?
No, Hush Blackwell is solar gateway. It's their attorney.
Okay, that's fine. I wanted to make sure the county wasn't going to be doing anything with Hush Blackwell, so.
Commissioner Lawson, you are up next.
Yeah, the, the only thing, I think you more or less already answered it for me, but they haven't even gone to planning and zoning yet, right?
No, that is correct. They have not. They've had some preliminary discussions with our staff, and I believe we are working with them to set up a pre-application meeting, but no, that's not been submitted to PNZ, to the staff for review, and it's certainly not yet even on an agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so, so this is purely getting the groundwork ready, should everything go well. The planning and zoning approves it-- and zoning approves it and they're ready to rock and roll and put this thing up, then we're more or less giving them a tax abatement.
Well, you're not, not tonight. That's what they're going to request.
No, no, I mean in the future.
Right, that's what they will request and present to you. But I would say in talking to the applicant, Gateway Trails, they want to do it simultaneously. So, while they're going through the planning and zoning process, I have every expectation we will get their application and information about a Chapter 100 tax abatement, which will allow us to do our due diligence. At the same time, they're going through the planning and zoning process.
And we will not be held responsible for anything, right?
For the cost to do the analysis?
Yeah.
Right, that's the intent of this refunding agreement, is to have the county's costs covered by the applicant.
Yeah. And also, to build it, to run it, and everything they do, just like any other business out there.
Right, this is a private project.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-286.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-286. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson? Yes.
Commissioner Wagner? Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to the final item on our regular agenda, and that is 2024-285, which was moved from consent to our regular agenda. So, we will take that up right now. Please give us some background. Administrator?
Sure. Twenty, if I may, I'll read it and then I'll be happy to talk about it and answer any questions. So, Resolution 2024-285 is the transfer within a fund in the amount of $20,000 transferring from vacancy savings to the contractual account for costs associated with the contractual interim road and bridge director. So, as the commission is aware, and I'm sure now the public is aware, over the last two months, the deputy county administrator over highway, road and bridge has retired and just last week, so did our highway administrator. With those impending retirement and not having really any candidates that we were focusing in on at that point in time, we hired an interim director on a temporary basis to run the department, run the leadership. And so, as we do, this is a temporary hire. And instead of putting the individual through our payroll system, because it is a temporary interim position, it is through our contractual. Not knowing last year when we put this budget together that we were going to need some contractual dollars for this particular situation, we are requesting to move funds from payroll, which is savings, because we have those vacant positions, to cover the cost for the interim director. The interim director, I'd like to recognize and appreciate these here, but we've also put him on notice that we will be terminating his services on October 25th, because we're happy to announce that we do have a road and bridge director that will be starting October 15th. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the transfer.
Commissioner Withington, you had moved to have this put on regular agenda, so I'm gonna give you the opportunity to speak first if you would like.
No, that was, that was all I had. She addressed it.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson, you wish to be recognized? Oh, I'm sorry, he came up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you gonna make a motion?
I was just gonna move to approve it. I'll do that anyway, she can still.
Yeah, she can still speak, of course.
Move to approve 2024-285.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-285. And now I get to say further discussion and go to somebody rather than go to close. So, Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized to speak.
Just, so the question I have is, the 20,000 is paying from when to when?
From September the 18th through October 25th.
October what?
25th.
By no means do I have a problem with who we have. But I have, I know we're gonna probably, we have to do it, because obviously, this has already been promised. We're not gonna go back on our word to anybody, no matter what. But once again, $20,000 for one month, little over a month. I wish I made that kind of money. But yeah, I think that's excessive. It just amazes me, but no problem.
Before I go to Commissioner Johnson to close, is there anyone else wishing to comment before we make that decision? Very well, Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
That concludes this evening's regular agenda. Next, our discussion items. We have two items under discussion. The first being Midcontinent Library Annual Report from Teresa Johnson. Administrator, would you like to give us another?
Well, I think I'd like to introduce that Teresa Johnson is not approaching the podium, but she is the one who requested to be on the agenda for the annual report by the Midcontinent Library. So, I will turn that over to our speaker from the library.
You look more like an Aaron to me, to tell you the truth. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Teresa would be easier to look at than me, but nonetheless, I'm here. So, good evening. My name's Aaron Mason. I'm the library director for Midcontinent Public Library. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight about our library and the impact it's having in our community, especially here in Clay County. Today, we delivered our annual audit, our financial, our final budget, and an annual report, which is a modestly sized document that leads you to more information that can be found online by scanning the QR code. So, today, I just want to go over just a little bit of the highlights of what's happened in our system in this past year. And I'm excited to share that the library has reached a record-breaking milestone of circulating roughly 2.10, 2 million items in the last year. And this reflects not only the increasing demand for our resources, but also the central role our library plays in the lives of our community. As of today, we have over 310,000 active customers, which translates to roughly 43% of our households at least have one person as an active cardholder. To me, this demonstrates that we're as relevant today as we were 10 years ago. Aside from circulation, our physical spaces are very active. Last year, we saw an 8% increase in visits, with 2.5 million people walking through our doors. The use of our meeting rooms has also increased, with a 31% increase in reservations. This demonstrates that our library is not just a place for books, but it's an important gathering space for our community to connect, collaborate, and engage in meaningful ways. Here in Clay County, we've had some notable achievements. Our North Oak branch has opened, and as of today, I believe, it's already a cornerstone of the community. Roughly 67,000 visitors and 1,900 new cardholders. We've reached that benchmark in the first eight months of being open. The Carney branch I'm bringing up, because they hosted a wonderful exhibit this year called Crossroads: Change of Rural America, which explored the evolution of rural communities across the country. This exhibit in particular brought a wide range of visitors to our library and underscored our role in connecting local residents with national cultural experiences. The Woodneath Center, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, has also made significant contributions to the library's impact. The Story Center located at Woodneath was recognized with the Historic Preservation Award. The Story Center's programs continue to draw from across the metro area and nearly 2,300 attendees in the last year. The Woodneath Auditorium has become a hub for major events, including small business boot camps and the successful launch of our Facing the Future series, which connects library patrons to renowned experts in the areas of artificial intelligence and machine learning. This next thing I'm gonna talk about, you will have to view for yourself if you scan this document. Last year, we launched a video series called Nice to Meet You. And the point of that was to kind of bring us closer together as a system. So, we profiled the stories of people in Platt, Clay, and Jackson Counties. And as luck would have it, last year, we featured two Clay County residents, Tom and Amy Gray, who run a small business and family farm in Smithville. If you care to watch those videos, you can do so by logging onto our website. So, most importantly, the library board adopted our fiscal year 2425 budget with the understanding that the library would need to fully restore the property tax levy to support expenditures. The library board this last month restored the levy to .3152 for the tax year of 2024. What this means to the taxpayer of a home valued at $200,000 is that their taxes would increase by only 9.73, $9.73. I use the word only, and I do recognize that $9 means different things to different people. But as we all aware that the senior property tax credit has come online and is being implemented in each of the three counties, on October 15th, the library system will have representatives from Clay, Platt, and Jackson Counties to go over this tax credit to make sure our staff are aware of how our patrons can take advantage of it. So, as we look forward to the future, I'm optimistic that the library will continue to evolve as an anchor of the community. And our mission is not just to provide materials and services, but to offer spaces that bring together our community, foster learning, and strengthen community bonds. We're committed to maintaining this momentum and continue to serve Clay County and its residents. So, thank you all. If you have any questions about library business, I'm happy to answer them. If you have any questions about the budget and our finances, with me today is Jeremy Wilmeth, our CFO. He's a little better at remembering numbers than me.
Thank you for being here this evening. Something I try to take every opportunity to say whenever the libraries come up, and that would be, I think we would all be better off if we used our library cards more and our credit cards less.
Agreed.
And I think the value of the libraries is something that it's hard for any one person to quite comprehend, the vast array of services. Something I'd like you to comment on just a little bit, and it's something that I've been interested in that the libraries have done for some years now, that is being a resource for small businesses. Businesses that don't necessarily have the ability to do a lot of research, and they need to be able to avail themselves of some of these services. And of course, I think the vast majority of what you do is free. There's probably charges on some minor things like copies. But on the whole, I would like to make sure the word gets out to people who are either starting a small business or are engaged in one, that they should not ignore the library as a resource to help them become better businesses. So, if you could just address that briefly?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Nolte. So, the Coburn Branch and the Summit is the home to square one small business. And that is their charge, is to work with entrepreneurs and help them develop their ideas and get, you know, get off the ground. It's not restricted to serving, the services aren't restricted to that branch in particular. They travel all throughout the three counties. In Platt County, we have the Culinary Center, which offers teaching classes, or culinary classes to the public. But on the back end, there's a business incubator at that location as well. But that's specifically to food-based businesses. And our first graduate this year, the name escapes me, but it was a Platt County business. They worked on their menu and I think purchased a food truck, and they came online as well. So, there's two points where we're doing help, we're helping patrons with small business.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners who have questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and thank you for the reading material, but I expect nothing less from the library. But bad jokes aside, I was just wanting to confirm, as far as the next year goes, whether it's programmatic or capital projects, anything on the horizon that would be something that we want to make sure that we, as a body, want to either inform our residents or let them know that something is coming. I couldn't remember what your construction schedule was, or if there's any more to do, so.
Okay, so our capital improvement plan, official one, came to an end this year. So, we've opened the last of 34 branches that were either rebuilt or renovated, the last being Riverside in Platt County. And so, that concludes that phase of our work. However, there's still maintenance issues and capital improvements that we'll need to make in the coming years. But for the time being, all of our major construction projects are over.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you very much for the service you provide to our community and the good work that you've been doing. And I think you've given us a library system we can all be very proud of.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your time.
Next item for discussion would be distribution of county funds to nonprofit organizations. That is Commissioner Johnson's issue. Commissioner, if you would like, I'll go ahead and recognize you, and you can begin the discussion.
Thank you, sir. So, it's been a couple months now, but we had, this body had a discussion about nonprofits and our funding of nonprofits as we get into this budget season. And it actually came about, I think, because the county administrator is looking for a way to more fairly disperse those funds, a more fair way for us to evaluate where those funds go. I guess I should back up. I want to preface this whole conversation with saying, I don't mean to offend anybody with my comments tonight. I certainly don't want to offend any of my colleagues, because this, I don't believe is a matter of good and evil. I think this is just philosophical differences here. And some were expressed different than mine last time. I'm sure they'll be expressed this time. So, just know I don't want to offend any of my colleagues. It's just my philosophical opinion on this and on how we should govern. And I certainly don't want to offend any of the nonprofits that have come before us in the past and who we've funded in the past and who are looking forward to more funding from us, should this be successful. I think all of those nonprofits that have come before this do very worthy causes, and I appreciate all of them. And I would encourage citizens to support those endeavors and those nonprofits. If you don't know, last count, we have in Clay County, 1,745 nonprofits. 1,745 nonprofits. And we, as a commission, have decided to give out funding for about a half dozen of those each year, and pretty much the same one each year. Now, I don't know the history of that, and I'm guessing most on the commission don't know the history of this, because it sounds like it went back quite a ways. So, I don't know how we started down the road of giving the ones that we do give money to and not others. And I know many have, some have come to rely on it every year. I think that was the whole purpose of our county administrator, trying to come up with a process that makes it more fair for the over 1,000, over 1,700 that are out there that want to be part of this. But I will say, I've put together, I've drafted a, I've crafted a draft ordinance that essentially, and if you look at the draft ordinance, Section 3 says it all. It says it will prohibit the Clay County Commission from allocating or spending taxpayer funds on nonprofit organizations. And I put a couple exceptions in there. One is for those that the county is legally obligated to support, and the other is for economic development initiatives. And in the original email I sent out to everybody, I talked about a super majority. We've gotten rid of that, by the way, after talking with the attorney. I thought it'd be better not to have that. But, so I've carved out exceptions, and again, this is a draft. This can be changed any way you guys decide to as a majority. So, I carved out some exceptions. And that economic development, certainly, my intent was that it's some kind of economic development that is for the greater good of the county. In other words, the return on investment of our taxpayer dollars is for the greater good of the county. But I shared with my colleagues, and I'll share it again publicly here, I listed basically seven reasons why I don't think we should be giving taxpayer money to nonprofit organizations. I guess first and foremost, I'll clarify, we don't have extra money as a county. We don't have extra money laying around. If we had extra money, my philosophy is we give that back to the taxpayers. We don't find a place to spend it. We give it back. And second, more importantly, I think it's, a lot of people in government positions, and I say government position, I'm not talking about just here, I'm talking about at every level. And I think it gets worse the higher you go. But at every level, I think government-elected officials forget that we technically don't have any money to spend. We don't spend our money. Anytime we want to spend money, we take it from other people first. We take it from our citizens before we spend any money. So, let's remember that. And when you look at the taxing system through the years and how it started and how it ended up, it was never meant to be the way it is now. up, it was never meant to be the way it is now. But we take, I say we, the government, not just this body, but the government at all levels, take a ton, a ton of taxpayer dollars and spend it for you, and decide where we want to spend it for you. And to me, this is an example of that, where I think it's, we've overstepped too far. Again, a philosophical difference, but I'm, and I'll list these things. Number one, I'm of the philosophy of allowing taxpayers to keep as much of their own money as possible. It has become way too easy for government to spend their, to spend other people's money, causing the enormous tax burdens we all face. And certainly, we have to understand, everybody wants lower taxes, but with lower taxes comes less services, comes less things that the government is going to do for you. Some people want both, low taxes and the government to do everything. We can't do both. I'm of the opinion, the philosophy, hey, less taxes, less government, and this is a situation where I believe that's true. Number two, I believe that all nonprofits that we have supported in the past are great causes. However, I do not think it is our role to force others to pay for these causes. People who have the means should be allowed to choose what causes they want to support, and some cannot afford to support any, and this should not be dictated by government, I believe. Number three, excuse me, the government has already given, most of these causes have already given to most of these causes through their tax-exempt status. Remember, these are 501(c)(3)'s, which means they don't have to pay taxes. To me, that's the government's gift to them already. We've helped you out by saying, you know, the rest of us pay taxes, other businesses will pay taxes, you don't have to pay taxes. And that could certainly save, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, depending on how big the operation is. But to me, that is, because we don't require them to pay taxes, that we're forced others to, they are saving tens of thousands of dollars, and to me, that's government's contribution. Number four, some of these causes that come before us are duplicates, that can tap into other funding sources the government has already created. We just discussed last week mill levies. One of the mill levies that the commission increased, a couple of mill levies the commission increased last, I was the dissenting vote against it, but a couple of mill levies that everybody else increased here was, one for developmental disabilities, one was for seniors weren't, we have one for seniors as well, and another one was for, what was the other one for? Mental health. We also, if you're not aware, there's a quarter cent sales tax in this county. One quarter cent sales tax on this county for Children's Fund. That was enacted, I believe, back in 2017 by the vote of the people. It passed, by the way, if I read it right, by 61 votes, which I'm guessing if it were to happen again today, it probably wouldn't pass in this economic environment. But that quarter cent sales tax receives tens of millions, so just this past year, looking on the website, just this past year, they gave 20 million to various nonprofits, this is taxpayer money, 20 million to various nonprofits such as Beacon Mental Health, which we give to in other sources as well, Synergy, Ability KC, which is children with disabilities, Level Up Kids, which is healthcare for low-income kids, Hillcrest Transitional Housing, Childhood Mental Health, and many more. And I think there needs to be a limit on how much more is forced on the back of the taxpayers. Number five, you may recall that I asked you guys to reach out to some of your constituents to get a feel for their support for us to spending their tax dollars on these organizations, and I know, at least Joanne reported back that she did that, as did I, and it was a resounding no. We want to make that choice ourselves. We don't want the government to make that choice for us and who we give to. Number six, I think these requests in the past have been handled very unfairly, and that's why we started the discussion. Now with many organizations expecting funding every year, and although Diana's come up with a solution for a more fair process, I think these funds can be, can lend themselves to what I call political improprieties, and I'm certainly not insinuating that's happening now, but I believe we need to eliminate the opportunity for temptations for those who come after us. Buying votes is fairly common occurrence in politics, and it is wrong. When I say buying votes, I mean using taxpayers' money to support a certain establishment, knowing that establishment is very well-connected politically and they will help us in our reelection. We know that happens, it happens, we see it all over the place. We certainly don't want that to happen here, and we want to get rid of the opportunity for that to even happen here. And there's some of those agencies that we give to are connected, well-connected politically. And it's sometimes hard for politicians to say no. That's how it gets so easy to spend other people's, because it's harder to say no when somebody, when a group comes to you, particularly someone with very political neck, this is, hey, you know, we'd like $50,000 from the county coffers. Sometimes it's a lot easier to say yes than to say no, and maybe it's because of my background, I'm used to being the bad guy and saying, I'll note a lot of people and throwing them in jail, it's easier for me, but we got to learn to say no, and I don't think we say no well enough or enough times. And this kind of codifies in an ordinance, if we do go with this, that basically ties the hands of the rest of the commission, so when people come to us, we'd say, no, we have an ordinance, we can't give to your nonprofit. There's an ordinance against that. I'd love to, sorry, but I can't. There's orders, it just makes it clean and safe for everybody, not only us, but the future, and if I need to be the fall guy for bringing this forward, I'm okay with that. And probably, number seven, I think the easiest and most convincing, is last week, we passed a reduction in the general fund mill levies of about $299,000, which is, by the way, the nonprofits that we give out each year is roughly, it averages about $300,000 a year that we give out to nonprofits of taxpayer funds. And like Commissioner Carpenter is very eloquent in saying, every time we talk about budgets, there's two sides of the ledger. There's two sides of the ledger. So we reduced our revenue last week by $300,000 in the general fund, $299,000 in general fund. So what expenses did we reduce? We didn't. This does that. This reduces almost identical expenditures of the revenue that we cut and those tax levy reductions. And to be fiscally prudent, we have to have reductions if we're going to reduce revenue. We have to have reductions in expenditures. And to me, this is one way that we can do that. So with that, that's in general why I think it'd be a good idea for us to enact an ordinance that does not allow us or any future commissions to give taxpayer money that we forcefully take with them to nonprofits that we decide are more worthy, because I think the citizens could decide what they think is worthy and what's not, and what they want to give to. And that's kind of my opinion on this, that's my philosophy on this, and that's my philosophy on how government should be. I'm of the smaller government, less taxes, you do more of the stuff yourself. And again, that's my philosophy and all. I'll yield to my colleagues.
I'll go ahead and leave your microphone on, because that way, since you're leading the discussion, that way you can respond to any questions or comments that are posed. Commissioner Lawson?
Commissioner Johnson's correct. I did go out, and I have done this again at another meeting, it was that just recently. I was surprised that those individuals at these meetings were so strong in their feelings that we should not be giving taxes to charities or, you know, any kind of not-for-profit organizations. I really thought that they would say, are you crazy? Of course you've got to do this. But that was not the case. There is a couple of things on this. In a way, I don't have a problem with this. I'm kind of a little bit conflicted, but I think that too often, you're right. It's easy for politicians to say, elected officials, whatever you want to call us, it's easy to say, oh, yeah, we'll give you that money, you know, makes you look like a good guy. They're going to walk away happy and say, oh, I got to remember this guy, he really, that was great that he did that. But we should not make decisions based on electability. We should make decisions that are sound. All of us talked about fiscally responsible, and that's why I complain so much on some of the things we spend money on. I do feel strongly that you're right on this. Unfortunately, I wish I didn't feel that way, but no, I do, because in my heart, I feel like I want to help anybody I can help. I go out and see that Level Up Kids facility, oh my gosh, these precious kids getting their teeth fixed, and they could not do that without the money that the people get to them. And then you see some of these other organizations that are building stuff for elderly or for handicapped people, and, you know, it makes your heart feel so good that these things are being done. But then again, people put us in this job to monitor their money, and I think that we need to be doing that and be very cautious about it. I would like to see this, if it is put into place, that it would be done on a yearly basis, that we would bring this to us, like right about now, budget, right before we start budget time, and we say, how good are we? Are we slim this year? Or we have more money than we know what to do with? You know, just to make it not a set-in-stone thing that we do it on a yearly basis, I would have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is that, and no hatefulness to anybody here, that I can't blankety-blank believe that we spent $20,000 to someone for one month of work, little over a month. Now, all of you voted, myself included, to do that because of the commitment already had been made to the gentleman. Had it been brought to me before it was made, I would have said, you've got to be kidding me. I think that he deserves a real fair amount.
Commissioner, we are discussing the charitable giving, that, so if we could keep our-
I know, but that's what I'm saying. How the hell can you say, let's cut everybody off from charity, and we're spending money like it's water on other things?
This is not, this is not an opinion point that I'm expressing. I'm saying we are supposed to be staying on the issue. The issue is the third-party expenditure, not individuals.
I'm not saying it on individuals. I'm saying, here's this money. We spent a good deal of money when we did this study, that where everybody learns what kind of style they are. That was money that went down the tubes that I think was, to some degree, in one aspect, it was good, but doing it and spending more is ridiculous. And you know what I'm going to say next? I can't believe we spent over $100,000 on that damn study for our jobs. That was a waste of big money. $100,000. I could have taken that $100,000 and made every one of the charities happy. You see what I'm saying is, I just, I think if we're going to do this, let's do it, but then we damn well better be very, very cautious about every dime we spend. And I even think that we ought to put something into place that says, any expenditure over $10,000 or $15,000, whatever you want to say it is, that that has to come before the commission for approval. And I don't care if it takes five hours of Thursday night to approve all that stuff. If we're going to be cautious about this and give nobody money and put the hammer down on that, okay, I'll go with it, but I want us to be on the other side to be just as fiscally responsible on our spending, so.
Yeah, if I could address it. I would remind commissioners that we need to discuss the matter that is on the floor and no other matters. That is, that is what we are required to do by both parliamentary procedure and sunshine laws, so please confine remarks to the matter that is under discussion. Commissioner Johnson, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Lawson, for those comments, and if I can address some of those concerns. First of all, I want everyone to understand, we are not cutting off funding to all nonprofits. Most of these places that come to us will continue to get taxpayer dollars, just not this $300,000 that we're giving them. Remember, there's a half-cent sales tax, or I'm sorry, a quarter cent sales tax has been in effect since 2017 for children's funding. The mill levies, last week we talked about, we charge on people's property taxes for senior services, for developmental disabilities, and for mental health issues. So there's money that's coming in, and like I said, tens and tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars collectively, that is going towards nonprofits to help some of these good causes. My point is, and those are being cut off, my point is, there needs to be a limit. And you made a comment about taking it year to year, depending on how much money we have left over. We should never have leftover money or extra money. If we do, then we're taking too much money from our citizens. And if we have extra money, we refund and a tax refund. I doubt that'll ever happen, because we are short, our staff salaries, our, I'm sure we're going to find out in this salary study, we're going to find out how short we are there, our number of staff, I'm sure we're going to find out that we're short there, and, you know, we all ran on public safety, we know there's an issue with our jails, we know there's an issue with our, I mean, I could go on and on about where we need money. And again, these causes are great. My philosophy is, it's not our job to take these taxes. The sales tax, the quarter cent sales tax, that was voted on by the people. They made that decision. We didn't make that for them, and they made that by 61 votes. They made that decision. I like that. I don't like taking their money and say, we're going to make a decision for you how to spend on charitable organizations. One thing is, if it's a greater good, you know, for, you know, public safety, roads and bridges, but, you know, to go rebuild a senior's house over here, because this is what this group does, which I love, that's not the burden of the taxpayers, particularly taxpayers that can't afford it. And those who can afford it, those who do have expendable income, let them decide what charity they want to give, if any charity, but hopefully they're giving, but let them decide what charity to give to. I know me personally, I give to charities, but I like to decide for myself who to give to. I don't want anybody else deciding who to give, because there's a lot of things to evaluate when you give to charity. There's a lot of overhead expenses that some charities cause that I don't want to give to people that are just making, you know, the CEOs are making money, big bucks, and that happens a lot. And we're not really in the process of vetting these charities very well, to begin with, but yeah, that's just my philosophy. You know, this needs to be a decision made by the taxpayer, not by us. And again, there's still plenty of taxpayer funding going to a lot of charitable organizations, even if we did pass this, so please don't make that mistake. But this really sets the left side of the ledger and the right side of the ledger, it matches them up, from what we reduced last week to what we need to reduce on expenditure side. I think this does the job for us.
Did you have any, I put your mic back on, in case you had more discussion.
Only one thing I wanted to say. No, I think that the money that we allocated on the levy, the increase, or anything like that, I have no problem with that, and that is all going to good causes. But when you talk about this, then maybe you need to clarify, are you going to say that, let's take Level Up Kids as an example, just as an example? They get money through a lot of different channels, I know they do. Now, we are not going to sit down and say, okay, we're going to give them $100,000 this year. You're saying that's coming through some other avenue, and same way with some of these other neighborhood associations and things of that nature. We're going to cease and desist there because there is government funding that comes into them. We're talking about the money we're going to donate or allocate to charitable organizations is what we've done with the levies and things of that nature, not over and above that, correct?
Right. And if you, I would encourage people to go to the Children's Fund, Clay County Children's Fund website, and they'll see how much money they bring in and where that money goes, and you mentioned one of them that they go to. We don't touch that, we don't do anything with that, and that money will still come in, you're going to pay a quarter cent on everything you buy in Clay County that will go towards that. So there's funding going there, and there's a lot of these places that come to us, they can, they can go to this children's funding source and apply for grants from them as well, and some of them do. You know, Synergy has come to us, and Synergy has also got money from the children's funding source. So yeah, that's there, and that's not going to be touched. This is just the $300,000 that come to us as individuals and as a group here asking for money, that will be included.
Commissioner Wagner? Oh, excuse me. Fat fingers strike again. There we go.
Green means go. So just a couple of comments. One, I tend to believe that not only the decision last week, but the decision by voters two years ago regarding commercial properties and the cert tax associated with them, which resulted, I believe, in a $200,000 hit to this budget, give or take. So between those two decisions alone, we have $500,000 less than what these three had, even when they started. I tend to think, in some respects, and I guess to that last point, this will become a self-fulfilling prophecy by its own accord. I do have to say though, and I appreciate, you know, people trying to do their due diligence, commissioners doing their due diligence, talking to people, but I always, I always take that with a grain of salt, because when someone is not a user of a service, they don't believe the service is necessary. But I would guarantee you, if your conversation was with someone who took- who took advantage of a housing service, they're going to tell you, this is, this is a good use of my tax dollar because they are paying taxes too. If I were to go a little bit further, you know, I represent the Western District. There is hardly any money, really no money, that this county spends in Gladstone, North Kansas City, Kansas City, for that matter, Liberty, other than what we pass through from road district funds. Yes, which, which we do. But we don't spend money there. And so if I were to ask someone in North Kansas City, what does the county do for you? I know what that answer is going to be. Nothing. And they will question, why am I paying any levy to Clay County? Now, I could argue, well, the sheriff will come if you call him. Okay, okay, fine. But, but my point is, it is all in the eye of the beholder as to the value that the taxes bring. And I, I, I understand that not everybody believes that what they pay comes back to them, and therefore they don't know why they pay what they pay. We've had the same discussion related to school districts and those who have had their children go through, and there's their value to that. So it, it's a slippery slope is my point. And, and I want to be careful when we start saying what's valuable to whom, because anyone can make an argument about anything that they pay in taxes. And depending on their position, they will find value or they may not. Um, but that being said, um, as, as my, if I recall correctly, outside of the two agencies that we are required, uh, to provide funding to, the, the categories that we did fund in the last round basically covered health and housing, if, if I remember correctly. Um, we did not elect to support, uh, the economic development category, other than a membership that we subsequently did. So, you know, I, I do, I, I get, yes, there's a lot of pressure on elected officials to give money and they can be the hero and so on. But I will also say, we've said no to people. And we can say no again, and with less money to work with, we probably will be saying no to, to several people. But, but I, but that all leads to a question. And, and, um, and I, I do want to take that economic development initiative. Um, there are some organizations where that's very clearly defined. Um, I think I may know the answer you may give, Commissioner, but I'll go ahead and ask the question anyway, because I am one who would say, well, things like housing are actually, can be economic development activities, especially if it removes a blighting influence that infects other areas. At least that's kind of how I look at things. But, but, but I would, I would like to have a better understanding of economic development initiatives. And are we talking about EDCs, for example, or is that a broader category? I'd like a better understanding of that.
Yeah. So I was thinking more of EDC or along those lines.
Okay.
Uh, which has a little bit more broader, um, reach when it comes to economic development, you know, uh, more than, like I said, more than fixing up so and so's house, which makes this neighborhood nicer. Uh, they're much more, more broad than that. Um, I, I do have a question for you. You, you mentioned 500,000 less. I didn't understand what you were talking about.
So basically two tranches. So the first, which is what you referred to was last week.
Right, right, right.
And what we talked about there. The other I'm referring to is the vote that came out of the commission when there was just three. Uh, I think that was in the process when we were all running for election the first time. And that was a change to the commercial cert tax, if I'm explaining that properly, um, which lowered that by 10%?
That was actually a vote of the people.
Oh, no, correct, correct. But, but my point, my point is, the, um, we, we are already taking back, or there's already funds that are leaving and have left our budget. And so my, my point is basically, in a sense agreeing with your last point that-
Yeah.
But it's not just $300,000. There's actually more, making it more difficult to provide assistance to some of these nonprofits. And so I guess, one way to look at it is, well, if that's the case, might as well vote for this so it's all codified. Or the opposite way of looking at that is, we're already down that road anyway. And so is there a need to codify something? Um, because our, our first obligation is going to be to our organization. And, and there may not be anything left over anyway for, for anybody else. So the, the point is being that the haircut, there's a haircut, there's been one, actually there's been two.
Well, if I could address that, I, I, when we talk about the reduction in, in the cert tax, um, that wasn't a decrease in revenue to us. That was a decrease in the increase, if you will. You know, we didn't get less money the, you know, the following year once that went into effect. Well, we still, so, so we didn't have to reduce that side of the ledger. We just didn't get, we just didn't get more money. Uh, in other words, the, the, the increase was less than it would have been, but we still had an increase. So it's not like we had money taken away from us. Where, where this levy projects a $300,000 decrease, $290,000 decrease.
Well, yes and no, in the sense that, um, everything is not static. So even though, yes, that went up, the base changed.
Yeah.
But every other expense went up the same way it would have otherwise. So now you project out, what, we're three years away from that now, or three budget years probably away from that now. My point being is that because that rise had changed, we have less money today to spend because that base changed as a result of that vote three years ago.
But then you can also argue values, assessed values have gone up too. So people are paying even more in taxes than they were before. So they continue to go up. And the, so the idea, and I think government should do the same thing I tell my kids, never let your expenses rise to meet your income. And that's a problem government has. The expenses always rise or surpass the income. We should never let that happen. Uh, and one more thing that you talked about is you talked about use of services. And, and you know, if we don't use the services, they're not important to us, um, but they may be important to other people. True. Uh, my whole issue with this, my philosophy is, is what services is government supposed to provide? In other words, I'll tell you one service that I use all the time, and that's a mechanic, a car mechanic. How come the county's not paying for my car mechanic? Or your car mechanic? Cause that's just not a, a service that we think that the government needs to provide for its people, you know, taking care of their car. And so it comes to, well, what things do we need to provide? And at what level do we need to provide? And a lot of the things that we're talking about already are provided at some level. I, I'm also, I don't want to say provided, assisted with at some level with tax dollars, like the ones I've mentioned. Um, however, it, it, this goes back to the philosophy. I don't think it's government's job to do that. I mean, you, you start to, you start to drift into the socialist, uh, society where, you know, all things common and we just, we give all our money, let the government decide, and you know, and, and everybody gets everything equal. Uh, obviously that's not how we're set up completely. Uh, but, so this comes where, where do we think we need to draw the line on how much do we give and what do we give to? And this is where I think we need to draw the line, basically. That's, that's my-
No, and I understand that. And, and what it all boils down at the end of the day is, is there a public purpose to what, to what we do here? Um, is there a public purpose to these items, whether they are things we want to support or not? And I don't, I don't argue that a bit. But, but I, 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 I do have to go back just for a moment to say, you know, as I, as I've mentioned these last couple of budgets, and as we've had these presentations, and part of the reason why we're talking about financial policies, um, for the county is, there are structural issues within the county budget that scare the heck out of you. And this little amount, if it's there or not, it's not going to break the bank. It is really a philosophical question. Where I get really scared is everything else. And that's why, when bases change, there are downstream impacts because we pay for people, we pay for roads, we do all those things. But, but that's for another, another time. I, I guess what I, what I'm trying to really understand is, uh, yes, there are other places that, um, that they can go to for money. We don't control them. Um, and if a group changes what they want to, uh, give money to, which happens quite a bit, then all of a sudden that affects a lot of organizations who are then looking for places that can assist them. If we neither have the funds to give, or if we do not have, or if we do not feel like it is a purpose that we want to spend county funds on, okay. Uh, I guess just to kind of bring it back to the, to, to the start for me, it is, I don't know that we'll have much money to give anybody anyway. So if we wish to codify, I guess we can. But I just want to make sure that when someone says, what are you giving your money to? I have an understanding as what was intended. And so I, I feel I have that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner, I'd like to go ahead and address something. And I think it's the way you started the discussion, actually. Uh, and then I'm, I'm sorry, then I'll go to Commissioner Carpenter.
And that is this, we've talked about several different taxing mechanisms. Um, we've talked about the reduction in the cert tax, and we've talked about the, uh, children's fund. And although we didn't talk about it, we just had an example of the library fund. Those are three examples of the monies that were, uh, voted on by the people for specific purposes. And I think that brings us back, and it's not really so much a question, it's just trying to pull the point back up and let you comment on it. And that is, um, it is the people's money first and foremost. If the people voted to any one of those three items, if it was a wise decision or an unwise decision, um, it's, it's their decision. And I think the distinction you're trying to draw here is that, and it, and you did draw it, but I think it's starting to get a little lost in the verbiage. And that is, uh, this is money that is directed by ourselves in a discretionary purpose.
Right.
The thing is, we, the question, really, the base question to me is, is it appropriately within our discretion to put these funds out there? And I think that's kind of the crux of the matter, whether we, we should or should not be assuming that role. So just having made that point, go ahead and please expand.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. That's it. And I, I always get nervous when there's, um, discretionary funds for, for politicians to deal with. And that's kind of how we've been treating this over the years. Uh, and again, I, I, I give kudos to our county administrator who's been trying to, to clean that up with us, which brought this conversation to a head here. But, um, but yeah, I, I, I'd rather have, if the people want to vote on that, and they have, and they did, and they, they're getting money from that. But, um, but yeah, no, I, I agree. And I see Commissioner Carpenter's waiting to talk, so.
He is. Uh, and I apologize for jumping in front of you, but it kind of fit into where the discussion was.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Carpenter, you are recognized.
Thanks. So I'll, I'll be fairly brief because I, uh, you know, I'm interested in this subject and could probably talk a lot about it. Um, first just want to say, agree, uh, with, uh, Commissioner Johnson's comments off the top, um, in terms of, you know, sometimes we disagree on stuff and like, it's all good. I think that's a, their correct mentality to have. Um, you know, you mentioned it's not good versus evil. Totally agree. And I would suggest that that is like always the case. I mean, I, you know, what I find is that sometimes I strongly disagree with other people. Um, but, but generally they're like capable, well meaning people who just have come to a different conclusion than me. And it's helpful, I think, to try to keep that in mind. Um, and so that's true here. Yeah. You know, I would, uh, not be in favor of an ordinance like this. You know, I think, um, if we don't want to fund any of these entities, we have that within our capability to not fund any of the entities. So we, we can make that decision, uh, all on our own without a, an ordinance in place. Um, you know, in my view, currently we're giving less than two tenths of 1% of our county budget, uh, to these various entities and the, and the work that they do. I find their work valuable. Um, and to me, uh, you know, setting aside a couple of tenths of 1% of the budget to, to help them complete their mission to serve residents here in Clay County makes, you know, a lot of sense to me. Um, with regard to, you know, uh, entities being politically connected and stuff, I, I will just note that the one that the ordinance envisions, um, still receiving money is, is arguably the one that would have by far the most, uh, sort of political pull of, of any of the entities, right? You know, I don't think, uh, rebuilding together Kansas City, uh, compared to, uh, the EDC probably has much political pull. So if that's the concern, I, you know, I might suggest that, that it'd be, uh, include everyone. Um, but yeah, you know, in my view, if, if anything, I, I, I would probably, uh, put a little, a little more than two tenths of 1% of our budget toward these causes. I haven't advocated, uh, uh, taken steps to actually do that in part because in my role in this job, I, you know, don't see pursuing big spending increases as being a very wise choice, especially given that we have tight budgets. And, you know, that's the reality I came into. And so I haven't, uh, gone out of my way to, um, make our spending situation any, any worse, uh, than what, uh, we inherited from past commissions. Um, but I feel pretty comfortable with, uh, with the amount that we put toward it right now. Um, and in my view, I think we ought to keep, uh, keep supporting some, some of these entities. I, you know, do agree it makes sense to maybe have a better mechanism by which we decide which of them to fund. Um, and then just lastly, uh, you know, Commissioner Malti, you rightly asked the question, you know, is it, should, should we, um, do this or not do this? And indeed, I think that's the question before us with, uh, with this ordinance. And so if we pass the ordinance, then whether it's rebuilding together Kansas City, Level Up Kids, NNI, whoever, obviously that will take our contributions to them down to zero. Um, and, um, so I agree, we ought to make that decision tonight, whether we want to do that. Um, you know, I think that's the purpose of the discussion. Um, and where I come down on that is no. And I would love to hear everybody's perspective on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard Johnson, before I recognize you, I just want to remember, uh, remind the other commissioners who have not commented yet, they're more than welcome to jump in. But right now you are next on the queue. So I'm recognizing you to speak.
Thank you. Um, so, as for me, I think this is a, a good thing. But I, I really would like to see us look at the feasibility of doing this on a yearly basis. In a way, because several things. Number one, you know, I think this is, should be scrutinized each year, number one. Number two, um, I, I think that we have to watch making decisions that are long term for the next group of people that come in here. Might be a while before we have any new people on, but, but we should, I hate to see us, uh, put a rule in hard and fast. I'd, I'd like to just see it do, be done each year. Um, I, I, I have a, a very conflicted feeling on this, but I know you're right. And, and I'll, I'll never admit that again.
I love that.
Uh, no, I'm kidding. I know you're right in what you're saying, seriously. Um, but then I want you and the rest of you to make the commitment that we're going to be, we're going to scrutinize like heck the, the spending that we do. If we're going to start putting the hammer down on charitable organizations, okay, but then we better be, you know, you don't, you don't tell your kids, no, we can't go on vacation, we can't do this, we can't do that. And then turn around and buy a brand new fancy Rolls Royce, you know? If we're going to be, um, lean and mean that we're going to be that way straight across the board. We're going to make sure that our people are, are extended properly and make sure that our roads and bridges, our law enforcement, the things that are important to people are taken care of properly. But we're not going to be frivolous on how we spend money. I think we need to really put the hammer down on a lot of that. So as long as we can, you can give me some assurance, you're more than willing to do that. I'm fine with the way this goes.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, I'm a fiscal conservative. And actually, it's, it's surprising. When I came on the, uh, the commission, uh, you know, I look over here at my colleague, uh, Mr. Carpenter, Commissioner Carpenter, and, and I tell you, I've been impressed with his knowledge of budgets. And the guy's a money guy. The same with Commissioner, um, well, all the commissioners. I, you know, I was going to say Wagner, but, but everybody. And, and I think everybody has a pretty good eye and a sense of, hey, you know, we can't, we can only spend so much. I don't think anybody's a big spender up here. And, and like I said, I love the fact that whenever we, we reduce revenues, he says, hey, we got to look at expenditures if we're going to do this. And he's absolutely right. And, and, um, and so I appreciate that. So I, I think we're all, I think, pretty conscious about, about spending and will continue to be, and will have to continue to be. And I think our county administrator is very good at pushing it. This is just a philosophical thing, I think, of, is this the one that we spend on or not? And this is one where I, where I think, uh, I think that we don't. Um, but yeah, no, I, I think there's, um, yeah, I, I agree. You get, I'm always going to be fighting for, for fiscal conservativeness and, and that was my whole life. That's, that's, that's what I've done in my life since, since I started budgeting personally since I was eight years old. I have budget books going back to when I was eight years old. I have my eight year old budget where I made 25 cents in allowance every week. Uh, and I know exactly where I spent every single dime.
You were not spending.
And I'm not kidding. Yeah. I'm a little messed up. I'm not going to lie. But, uh, but yeah.
Jason.
Uh, so many comments to make, but I'm going to let those go. Uh, and I will go to Commissioner Withington. Bail me out, Commissioner Withington. Uh, make sure I don't say anything silly.
I didn't, I didn't have a budget booked. I just took my money to the baseball card shop.
That's no joke.
Uh, so, so I'm fine- So, I'm fine with cutting the funding if we all agree to it. I don't know if we necessarily need to have an ordinance. I think it would just be a decision we can make during the budgeting process, that's where I'm at. But, you know, I think a lot of these organizations do do a lot of good work, like Northland Healthcare Access. My problem is with one organization, and I've said plenty about that, I don't want to get anybody worked up about that one organization, but I would argue, Commissioner Carpenter, that NNI is pretty politically connected too. They're probably, they're not tied to the EDC, they're right up there. But I don't, I think if we cut NNI's funding, I think they're going to be fine. You know, they came and presented us all the projects they supposedly did in Clay County with the money that we presented to them, but it turns out that they get funding from the city of Gladstone. So, they're not going to be, they'll still do projects in Gladstone. Turns out, they also get money from Excelsior Springs in North Kansas City, so they're not going to stop doing projects in North Kansas City, Excelsior Springs, because the municipality gives them money. So, plus, NNI gets TIF funding. That's how their nice new office was built, was with public TIF funds. So, I'm fine, since we cut the loveys, I'm fine with cutting this funding.
Commissioner, I had a question, and that was, a lot of times when we look at these kinds of issues, we see what other counties around us are doing, particularly first-class counties, because they are the most like comparatives. I was wondering whether you had come across any examples of counties who were either doing these similar kind of expenditures, or that had done them in the past and removed them? I realize that there are a lot of counties in this state, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, there's actually 114, 115 counties, 114 counties and one independent city, St. Louis, in the state. And by the way, as far as the number of nonprofits in the counties, we rank number seven of the 115, we have the seventh-most amount of nonprofits in our county. I was under the impression, and so I didn't research that specifically, but I was under the impression through hearsay, and I don't know if somebody can confirm that, that Platte County does not give any of their funds.
Yeah, Platte County cut their funding to the EDC, and then the lady from Northland Healthcare Access, when she was here this late last year or whatever, she said Platte County cut.
Yeah.
And I talked to Wes about this, Wes, the county administrator, and he said that they don't give any outside.
Funding in their budget? That they've cut all that.
And from what I understand, they have the same children's fund thing that we have, they had that coming up on their ballot.
Yeah, that's on the ballot for, is it this November?
I think so.
Yeah, and then they also have Maple Woods Community College, or the Metropolitan Community College sales tax on their, coming up also on their, but yeah, no, they cut all their outside agency funding.
Right, yeah, that's the only one, but I haven't looked other places.
No, and it's, you know, doing that kind of research, when we were talking about the surtax, that was one of the things we did, was we, but that was an easier thing to get, because it is easily documentable and easily researchable. This is a little bit more in the weeds, so researching this would be significantly more difficult. So, I understand, I was just curious if you'd come across, if it wasn't a...
Although, I will tell you, you know, I most of the time don't care what other counties do. I think we do what's best for Clay County, and if we're going to be the leaders, we'll be the leaders. And if somebody else has already come up with a better idea, then I'm not afraid to follow someone else, but to me, I don't care what other counties do. It's more important to me that we do what we think is the best thing for Clay County, period.
Commissioner Wagner, I believe you were waiting to be recognized.
Thank you, very briefly, although I know this won't sway a few folks, but Jackson County does it. It's called the Auditor's Fund, and it's part of their budgetary process. The organization I work for during the day has received funds from, and so have a bunch of others, so it does exist there. But my, the point I was going to make was, you know, again, this may not be an issue in the sense of how our budget's going to be moving forward, and I tend to look at this as a first-dollar, last-dollar kind of thing. Where do you put your first dollar? Well, the first dollar always goes to what you must pay for, and to me, that is the organizations that we are required to put money into, as well as our own operation. And it's, I don't mean to defer, although it will sound like it probably, but it seems to me, I know only part of the equation. I know an equation based on some of the funds that we've given in the past, I don't know yet what our budget will say. And again, I come from the standpoint of, you know, it may very well be that what Commissioner Withington has suggested may come to pass, just because there's no money to give anybody, but I don't know that. And so, I'd love to see what our budget says, and see where we are rising, and where those rises will come from, because it may end up being there's really nothing to give, no matter what anybody wants. Which then leads into the comment that our colleague has said, or has made regarding doing this year over year. If you have money, then you can set parameters to it.
Exactly.
If you don't have any money, then it kind of takes care of itself. So, I'll just leave it at that. I'd certainly like to know where we are at budgetarily, knowing that we have said no to folks before, so I don't necessarily see the rush to set a parameter that may not be even necessary. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I don't see any other commissioners seeking recognition. One thing I would like to point out, and I want to compliment Commissioner Johnson on that, is this is a well-written ordinance. This allows us to, because you've got exceptions, this allows us to focus on the issue, not on methodology, because I think the methodology put forward, I think, is solid. So, this allows us to have, I think, a discussion that is going to be on issue and on whether or not this is a path we should continue following, or whether we should turn to another direction. If there's no other commissioner wishing to make any comments, I want to turn it back over to Commissioner Johnson, let him make his comments. I assume what you're looking for is that it now be given to the administrator to be put together and considered by the commission at some future point.
Yeah, right, I think everyone knows my opinion on it. I appreciate the conversations and the input from everybody, and, but anyway, so I think now it goes to whether or not we want to move this forward or not, because it's just a discussion item, there's nothing to vote on tonight, there's just a discussion item, and a chance for me to give my opinion on this, and if we want to move this forward, to come back, to actually look at it and vote on it, and even change it more, or if you just want to kill it now. But my recommendation would be to bring it back and vote on it.
Commissioner Carpenter, I apologize, you had something you wanted to add to the conversation.
No, thank you, Commissioner. I was just going to say, actually, pretty much what Commissioner Johnson just said, which is typically our protocol is on discussion, before we would send it back to the administrator for her to do additional work on it, we would just determine whether it's the consensus of the commission, whether or not to proceed with doing that, and we haven't done that yet, so just figured we, but that's what Commissioner Johnson just said, so, yeah, agreed.
And my opinion is that this is not one of those issues that we are giving the administrator necessarily a consensus opinion on. This was made to, for informational purposes, and that you wish to go forward with having it drafted, and then brought up at whatever future meeting you is available.
And keep in mind, it's, we're coming in a budget season, so we're going to need to know whether or not this is going to happen or not, so I think at this point, it's just kind of a, take a tally on where we want to go.
Yeah, so I just reiterate what I said before, which is, what our protocol is, is that when something comes up for discussion, before it would move to the next stage, we would determine whether we have the majority of the commission, and so, I assume Commissioner Johnson would like to move it to the next stage, totally respected, but I do think that in order to do that, we ought to determine whether we have a majority of the commission that wants to pursue that.
If we want to, do we want to then see if there is consensus? I, to tell you the truth, when we're talking about different kinds of policies, and I'm willing to go that route, in my opinion, when a commissioner wants to bring forward an issue, I think it's good practice to have this kind of discussion. I don't necessarily see it a necessary step to get consensus for a commissioner to act. I'm a little bit, I don't think a commissioner needs consensus of the commission to put forth a proposal, but I don't mind getting a consensus, but...
Yeah, no, that's kind of been how we've operated, you know, all along here, and so I'm fine with kind of taking a tally, hey, do we want to bring this back on the consent agenda, or regular agenda, regular agenda, as something more formal to look at, and still have, doesn't mean we'll pass it, it just means, do we want to have more conversation on this, do we want to, even an opportunity to, you know, make some changes to this draft ordinance or not? But no, I certainly don't want to, if I'm the only one, I know it's not going to pass, and I don't want to waste time, so this is kind of the discussion we have, if, you know, people want to bring it back, and I think we've got at least a couple of people that want to bring it back, but maybe we should, like we always do, just kind of take a little head count, see, hey?
So, the question really before is for consensus, in my opinion, is, do we want to consider this in a future meeting? Not whether we want to pass it right now, but whether we want to continue our discussion. I'm sorry, Commissioner Withington, I think you were looking to be recognized also?
Yeah, I think what John said is correct, you know, usually, we do look for consensus, so I'll be the first one to say, I'll vote to move it forward.
Yeah, me too.
Commissioner Wagner?
Oh, excuse me. There you go. I think I've put out some issues that I have, I understand why it's been brought forward, I don't mind bringing it forward, where I may vote yes, or I may vote no. The other thing I will offer, though, is, you know, there's a lot in here that I think fits in with the financial policies discussions that we have had. And so, I'll just throw out there, since we're looking at a discussion on that, I think in a couple of weeks, I'll just throw out there, if you think it makes sense to roll this into that discussion, I don't have a problem with that. But if you want to, like, take it on its own, I can always vote no later, or I can always vote yes later, but...
We can log your vote now if you want, I mean, it's okay.
I don't believe in voting to vote, it's, yeah.
You know, I'd rather just keep this, treat it separate, if we want to bring it back, we bring it back, just because there's some time-sensitive things, I think, with a budget. I think we're going to have some people that end up coming in and pleading for money if we don't pass this, so, and I'm not sure if the financial thing's going to go through as fast as budget time.
Totally fine, that's totally fine. I will note, and my experience has been, it doesn't matter what policy you put forward, if someone is asking for money, they're going to come anyway. But being, but I will say, again, I don't mind having the discussion, I will just note that, in having that discussion at a later time, I would at least want to know, would like to know, the broad brushes of what we are looking at at this budget, because again, it may be taken care of without doing a thing, but I'd like to know that, so I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Thompson, what is your thoughts? Should we bring it forward?
Respectfully, I have...
Oh, excuse, Commissioner Carpenter, you'd, I'm sorry, you'd, go ahead.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. Again, I agree with Commissioner Johnson, that we ought to have some disposition on whether or not to move it forward. I would also like to, because I guess I don't really understand your perspective, Commissioner, in this, on this protocol conversation. My understanding of our rules as a commission is, and I would, I guess, like the county councils' view, but I thought that in order to get something to a regular agenda, it first must go through discussion, which is what we're doing now. If it achieves a majority consensus in the discussion phase, that is what would be necessary to move it to the regular agenda. That's my understanding of the rules, if I'm wrong, I would love clarity.
I think that's accurate, I think your statement is accurate. Now, I'll say, I'll preface it also, that if a commissioner, the way we've been doing it is, if a commissioner wants to bring something forward, the first stop is with the county administrator. If the county administrator agrees, yeah, actually, this is something good for the agenda, it can go on before a discussion. If it is more appropriate for a discussion topic, then we get consensus, and then put it back on, then, depending on the consensus, we put it on.
So, in your view, the necessary next step to move it to the regular agenda for discussion there would be a majority of the commission at the conclusion of this discussion item?
Yeah, I think a straw poll basically needs to happen and decide.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate the clarity, that's the way we've literally always done it, I'm not sure why we would deviate from doing it that way on this occasion. So, I'm not, regardless of your view on the particular ordinance, I think we ought to understand what the rules of, and our protocols are, and I believe that's the case. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I think this is a well-written ordinance, Commissioner Johnson. I tend to lean a little towards, I'd like to see what the budget looks like before I vote on anything and put any kind of serious policy into effect. I think, like, it has been brought up by my colleagues, it may resolve itself, but I am more than happy to continue to have conversations with this and hearing, and I think we've got a lot of good conversation about this, and, but at this point in time, I don't know if I'm ready to vote on this, to move it forward into place for the county right now.
And you're, of course, right, you would be ready to move forward, as far as...
Yeah, so I think, I think we, I think we have a consensus, or a majority, we'll at least bring it back for, put it on the agenda for discussion again, see if we need to change it, give it an up or down vote, and go from there.
I also think that it should move forward for consideration. Just for the point that I was trying to make, and this is a rules point, I'd like to get, I'd like to dig deeper in this, but what concerns me is this, I've served in both a minority and a majority position. What concerns me is that a consensus required to move forward could easily, could easily be something that would inhibit a minority who wanted to move an issue forward from doing so, so I have some great concerns about that, having been in a rather, a rather vigorously opposed minority. I'm very interested, and I really want, I'm very strongly about the idea that every commissioner should have the opportunity to bring an issue before us, whether we're talking about this, or whatever else. I think, I think if you have a majority of the commission which decides by their consensus, they don't want to bring something up that a commissioner really wants to bring forward, I've got a lot of concerns about that, because I can see, having served in that kind of a situation, I can see the downside, so I would like to explore that more deeply, and to tell you the truth, I would like to get more with you on that, but that is deviating from the purpose of this discussion, so I don't want to go there, I'm just explaining my point of view. So, I think that is a discussion for perhaps another time, I'm just explaining...
So, you're going to say something about it that nobody else does.
Excuse me?
Well, Commissioner, you're the one who just made your comments about it, so I would like to...
Oh, no, no, you may, no, I was just saying, I didn't, I didn't want to, very, on my own comments, I didn't want to get further down the road, because I didn't think it was appropriate. You absolutely may comment on that, I was just trying to put some governance on myself and keeping myself within the rules that I apply to other people. So, you may proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner, so I just want to say, I share your concern in that regard, and when we first discussed making these the rules a couple of years ago, at the time, I had such a concern. Nevertheless, those are the rules we adopted. The rules of this commission are that items go to discussion first, and in order to move forward from discussion, there has to be a majority vote of the commission to do so. Those are the rules we've been operating under every meeting for the last couple of years. Before that, it was different, you're right, when it was just the three of us, but those are the rules of the commission, so, you know, if you or anyone else wants to propose changing them, you'll have open ears and an open mind for me, but that's what we've been doing.
That is precisely what I was talking about doing, because, but I didn't want to get too far, because if we start talking about changing the rules of how we proceed too deeply, then I feel like I will be straying away from the matter before us, and I don't want to do that myself. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
I just wanted to agree with what John said, this is the rules that we've established, and I think we had a conversation early last year, or maybe '23, about this, because Commissioner Lawson and I wanted to put something on the agenda, and we were told that we couldn't without a discussion, but then our county administrator let you skip the line, and you didn't have to have a discussion for your topic, so I agree, these are the rules that we adopted, and we always have a discussion, and then depending on how the commission feels, that's when we move it forward to the regular agenda, so.
My comment is only perhaps we should consider revisiting that. That's the comment. Commissioner Johnson, do you have any comments as we wind up the discussion?
How about the Merriels, huh? I'm good to go.
Nice transition.
I'm done.
Nice transition. Very well, that ends our discussion portion of our meeting. That brings us to reports, administrator, that we have the first one, which is the Carney Special Road District.
Thank you, yes, there are actually two reports that were included in your packet for your review. The first one is from the Carney Special Road District, it's their annual... The first one is from the Carney Special Road District, it's their annual report, and then you also have Road District Number 10, which is for Excelsior Springs, their annual report for the Road District is included in your packet, showing the revenue they received, their beginning fund balance, the revenue they received, and the expenditures that they did during their fiscal period, and they have different fiscal years than we do, and showing what their ending fund balance is.
Excuse me, thank you. That brings us to county administrator comments.
Just as Commissioner Johnson said, go Royals, and the next Commission meeting is next Thursday, October the 10th, at 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington, we'll start with you this evening, do you comments might you have?
Yeah, I just want to say, go Royals, and I just want to point out that before the season started, I did tweet that the Royals were going to go to the World Series this year, so, you know, so far, I'm right. They're almost there, they got two more rounds, but then also, the port strike has been suspended, so all you guys that are hoarding toilet paper, you can take it back, so everybody else can stock up too, so, all right, that's all I have.
I don't know what Commissioner would dare to follow those comments, but Commissioner Lawson, you've drawn the short straw, so please proceed. Oops.
I was really worried about that toilet paper. Yeah, I'm pretty proud of the Royals. I love baseball, not much on football, but baseball is great, and they've just come back so strong, it's almost scary. The other thing I wanted to bring forward was, last week, Commissioner Nolte had mentioned that when we get into this Number 10 funding, that luckily Diana was quite conversant on that particular product, and so we had her. Now, I was talking earlier today with our auditor, and I mentioned that to him, and he was, I didn't realize that, but he always surprises me, he's extremely knowledgeable about that, extremely knowledgeable. So in the event that Diana wins the lottery, we've always got a backup with our friend downstairs, so we've got two very conversant people on that particular product. That's all I got.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
I was going to say, go Royals, but also go Chiefs. Thank you.
Given that it is almost 8 o'clock and we do have executive sessions, I am going to make no comments. So with that, that moves us on to the executive sessions. Is there a motion related to the executive sessions? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I knew that we'd go into executive session for personnel and contractual issues.
Motion's been made to go into executive session for personal, that would be Missouri Statute 610.021-3, and contractual, Missouri Statute 610.021-12, and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.[1788.97]